He's happy. Let's move it with the camera.
Good evening. We start with, this is a town council regular session. It's Monday, February 11th, 2013, and it is 7:42, right? So would everyone rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So Dale, roll call.
Council Vice President McAtee.
Here.
Councilwoman Healy.
Here.
Councilman O'Neil.
Here.
Three members present, Council President Whaley and Councilman Donnelly are absent.
I'd just like to let everybody know that President Whaley is stuck in Florida. Her flight was canceled and Mr. Donnelly is sick. So we have approval of the minutes of previous meetings. That's the work sessions of January 9th, January 14th, January 16th, and January 28th, 2013. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve those minutes.
Second.
A motion in a second. We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes three to zero. And we have the approval of the minutes of the regular session, January 28th, 2013.
I move approval of the minutes from the regular session from January 28th, 2013.
Second those.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? None. So it's motion carries three, zero. Would any of the council members like to take anything off the consent agenda?
Seeing none, then I move approval of this evening's consent agenda.
Second that.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? We have, that passes three, zero. That brings us to License A, which is a resolution granting a victualling license to Pegasus Pizza, Inc., doing business as Estia Pizza and Restaurant, 28 Old Tower Hill Road, Wakefield, Rhode Island. This application is by Aphrodite Fotopoulos, President of Seven Gray Birch Court, Wakefield, Rhode Island. This is a new license. Anyone here from Estia Pizza? Oh, come forward. They take the microphone there. That's okay.
Madam Chair, could I ask, could I ask that their testimony be limited to the victualling license? The full presentation on the liquor license should come through the public hearing.
You may ask, and did you guys, did you hear what Mr. Alfred said? The testimony is just as to the victualling license right now. You're gonna have a public hearing as to the transfer from, I believe it's, it's an estate issue, right? So that transfer will be at the next, we're gonna hear that tonight too. But just keep it to the license right now, whatever you'd like to say about Estia Pizza, which has been here so long.
Thank you very much. I will appreciate if I can be able to still do business.
Could you please identify yourself and...
I'm Aphrodite Fotopoulos. My husband, he just passed away about almost two years. And myself and my daughters, I would like to keep the business going. We're doing it real well. I have real good customers. And I will, all of us will appreciate if it's gonna be, give us the okay to continue to do the business. Thank you very much.
Anybody at the council have any questions?
No. I think the only question I might have is, everything is gonna stay the same in terms of hours, operation, all of that stipulations, that's gonna stay in play? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And, go ahead, Jim, do you have any questions? Aphrodi- Aphrodite, right?
Thank you, yes.
How long has Estia Pizza been in business?
Ten years.
Wow. Very good.
Thank you.
Is this your only location?
Yes, for now.
For now.
She's ambitious. Great.
Have you mentioned your daughters were running it?
Yes, with me. They have their own jobs, but they are with me too.
That'd be nice.
Thank you.
Any other questions? So do I have a motion?
I'll certainly move for approval of License A, Resolution A, granting a victualling license to Pegasus Pizza, Inc. And I think that's all we need to do is transfer that.
And I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Zero. Motion carries three to zero. But you have to stick around because we come back to you again on the public hearing. So, what?
Hearing will be later?
Yes, just a little while.
Okay.
Not, we won't keep it too long.
I'm Michael Chazen. I'm the lawyer for the estate. I'm just trying to help transfer the stock out of the estate to Aphrodite. And they own the licenses, so.
Very good, Michael. Well, that's, that's coming up. That's public hearing A, so we're almost there.
Thank you.
And now we have License B, a new License B, a resolution granting a victualling and holiday sales licenses to TLC Coffee Roasters Kingston LLC. That's 104 Fortin Road, Unit 2, West Kingston, Rhode Island, subject to approval by the Fire Chief and Communications Superintendent. This application is by Kenneth J. Merritt of 3362 Kingston Road in West Kingston, Rhode Island. This is a new license. Is Kenneth Merritt here? Is anybody here for TLC Coffee Roasters? Well, seeing none. To the end of the meeting? All right, we'll hold that. We'll come back to that. Okay. All right. So that brings us to public hearings. And this, a public hearing relative to an application for transfer of a license to keep and sell alcoholic beverages in South Kingston in accordance with the general laws of 1956 as amended as follows. Class B victualler liquor license. Transfer of a class B victualler liquor license from Pegasus Pizza, Inc., doing business as Estia Pizza and Restaurant, 28 Old Tower Hill Road, Wakefield, Rhode Island, by Stephen Marola, executor of the estate of George Fotopoulos, to Pegasus Pizza, Inc., doing business as Estia Pizza and Restaurant, by Aphrodite Fotopoulos, President for the Bar and Dining Rooms in accordance with a special exception granted September 19, 1990 by the Zoning Board of Review, and is further defined in a site plan on file in the Town Clerk's Office. This application is filed to effectuate a transfer of 50% or greater of the stock of the corporation. Now, this is a public hearing, and Stephen, no, I'm sorry. Mike?
Michael Chazen, yes. I represent, I work with Steve Marola, the executor. I work with him.
So here's your, here's your chance. Now you can tell us.
Thank you, once again.
And Aphrodite, why don't, why don't you come forward also?
George died about two years ago, April, it'll be two years. And he was 100% owner of all the stock in Pegasus Pizza. And the will says that everything goes to Aphrodite. But the corporation also owns the liquor license, and you can't just transfer the stock without transferring, they have to go hand in hand. So the purpose in the filing was to approve transfer of the liquor license to Aphrodite owning the stock, so we can get the stock out of the estate and then close the matter.
Right.
Thank you.
And Aphrodite was already a stockholder?
No.
No?
No, George was 100% owner.
George was 100%, I see.
How it's all 100% going to Aphrodite.
Any questions from the council?
The liquor license is, that is a full liquor license?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Jim?
I don't have any questions. It seems cut and dry.
Okay. Well, this is a public hearing, so if there's anyone in the audience who has anything to say or would like to come forward on this matter, please, please do so now. Seeing none.
Seeing none, Madam Chair, then let me make a recommendation here that we...
Can you close the public hearing first, Jim?
Okay, okay, let's do that. Let's, I move to close this evening's public hearing.
I second. We have a motion in a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? None. So it's motion carries three, zero. So we now go to...
And that was going to be my motion, and I'll repeat that again.
Okay. Now do that one.
Oh, I was just approving what Mike and Steve just said. So here we are, we're gonna approve, as written in tonight's agenda, the, to move for approval, as stated in tonight's agenda, and said transferred, of course, is contingent upon the issuing of, issuance of a certificate of good standing from the Rhode Island Division of Taxation, compliance with all town ordinances and regulations, payment of any municipal taxes and user fees and arrears to the town, and the correction of any fire code violations, and the satisfaction of all claims.
I second that motion.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor? Aye. None opposed. So motion carries three, zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And...
Good luck.
Yes, good luck. So we're now at public hearing B. This is a public hearing relative to an application for a license to keep and sell alcoholic beverages in South Kingston in accordance with the general laws of 1956 as amended as follows. This is a Class T legitimate theater liquor license. Application for a Class T legitimate theater liquor license by South County Center for the Arts, doing business as the Courthouse Center for the Arts, 3481 Kingston Road in West Kingston, Rhode Island, by Richard Erickson, Executive Director of the first and second floor areas of the existing building in accordance with a special use permit granted November 28, 2012 by the Zoning Board of Review, and is further defined in site plans on file in the Town Clerk's Office. So, good evening.
Good evening. I'm John Kenyon, Attorney for the applicant, the South County Center for the Arts. We're here tonight for two public hearings. The first is for the creation of the Class T liquor license. The second is for the issuance to the applicant of the license. You may recall, we were before you back in September for zoning ordinance amendment whereby you created two new use codes, legitimate theater and legitimate theater with alcohol service. Since we were before you, we applied for and received a special use permit from the Zoning Board to operate the legitimate theater with alcohol. Under Rhode Island general laws, towns and cities are permitted to enact and issue Class T liquor licenses, a, for legitimate theaters. A legitimate theater is defined as a nonprofit cultural organization whose primary purpose is to provide a support system to deliver and coordinate various art activities for the benefit of the community they serve. I've submitted the art, the original articles of incorporation for the South County Center for the Arts, and if you look in those, they meet that definition. The applicants provided the floor plan showing the proposed liquor service area on both the first and second floors. If the license is granted, it'd be limited to service during events and one hour before and one hour after, as long as they start after noon time. With me tonight is Anna Prager. She's gonna come up and quickly testify to their operation.
Good evening. I am Vice President of the Board of Directors of the Center for the Arts. And we've been before you before, so if you have any questions for me, I'll be happy to answer them.
Any questions?
I don't at this time.
John and Anna, I guess I, personally, I just think that's awfully tight. But is that a state rule, one hour before? You know, by the time you get folks all, you know, rallied and get going, and it's time for the show to go on, but is that a state law, one hour before?
Yes, it is. Yeah. I agree with you. That's pretty tight, but unfortunately, that's what the law says. But since this license would cover the first floor and the second floor, the theater is on the second floor. So I suppose if somebody buys a glass of wine, they can take it with them and finish it during the performance.
Any other questions?
That's all I had, Carol.
And this is a public hearing, so if there's anybody from the audience who'd like to say anything on this matter, please come forward. Seeing none.
Seeing none, then, oh, what I guess we can do, well, let's close the public hearing first.
And I just...
I move to close the public hearing.
I just wanted to ask Dale if there was any correspondence regarding this matter? No, thank you.
Okay, I second that motion to close the public hearing.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? There's none. So motion passes three, zero. Now we need to go to...
We're supposed to close.
We have to have an, we've closed the public hearing. Right. Right. I was getting there. Now if you'd all be, just wait a minute.
Jeez.
Okay. Public hearing C. This is a public hearing for public discussion relative to the need for additional liquor licenses within the community. So this is another public hearing, and if there's anybody who wants to come forward regarding that issue, the, relative to the need for additional liquor licenses within the community, please come forward now.
Seeing none, then I move that we close the public hearing.
I second that.
We have a motion in a second to close this public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Passes three, zero. Now, I'm gonna go to 13A. Okay, Mike?
Thank you.
Now, 13A is a new business, new business item. It's a resolution affirming or amending the town's liquor license rules and regulations as follows. Section 1, the number of licenses for each class shall be authorized as indicated below. We're only concerned with Class T legitimate theater. Currently, we have no number. And do I have a motion on, as to what we want to do with that?
I make a motion that we take into consideration letter T for the legitimate theater license with a fee of $100.
First, we have to increase the number, Meg. We're gonna increase it to one.
Oh, okay. I make a motion that we increase that to one.
From zero, from none to one.
None to one, to satisfy the theater license.
And can we do the fee at the same time?
Well, we'll do that next, right? You wanna do that too? Okay. And go ahead, Meg, do the fee too.
And my motion also consists of the T legitimate theater license with a fee regarding that license to be specifically held at the present time to $100 and to be reviewed as necessary.
I'll second that.
Any comments or discussion regarding that? Seeing none. We have a motion in a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Obviously none. So it passes three, zero. We have a legitimate theater license, one, and the fee is $100 annually. We all set on this? We go back. See, they're afraid to tell me now.
It's a roller coaster ride.
Mike was afraid to tell you.
I was afraid to speak up.
I was too, Mike.
Oh, now stop it. No, no.
We're not that scary.
Okay, now we're back to... B, okay. So now, do I have, any, anybody want to make a motion to approve the license request presented? No?
Of course.
I don't know, I don't know where we're going though.
We're back on a public hearing.
C, B, or C?
B.
All right. I make a motion for the application for Class T legitimate theater liquor license by South County Center for the Arts, DBA Courthouse Center for the Arts, 3481 Kingston Road in West Kingston, Rhode Island, by Richard Erickson, Executive Director for the first and second floor areas and of the existing building in accordance with a special use permit granted November 28, 2012 by the Zoning Board of Review, and is further defined in the site plans on file with the Town Clerk's Office.
Second.
And if I could just suggest that that motion begin with the word, approve the application.
Okay.
It'd be perfect.
I preface that by saying approve that application.
Yeah, I second that.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Zero. Motion carries three, zero. Good luck to you. Great.
Thank you.
Good job.
Should be wonderful.
Thank you very much. It will really help the theater that, you probably read in the paper, we're having some financial problems. This will help. Thank you very much.
It's okay, we believe in it.
Thank you, Anna, for...
Thank you, Anna.
All that you do for the theater. Okay, now, we're on communications, right? Communications A. This is a resolution adopted January 23, 2013 by the Barrowville Town Council in support of Senate Bill 2013-S0044 and House Bill 2013-H5072, Acts Relating to Elections. Conduct of elections that would delete the option of straight party voting by means of a single mark in non-primary elections is received, placed on file, and the Town Council further directs... We did discuss this at the work session, and I...
I move then that we place this on file.
I second that.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Zero. Motion carries three, zero. Next is a communication dated January 30, 2013, from Stephen R. White, tendering his resignation as probate judge effective May 31, 2013, is received, placed on file, and the Town Council further directs...
I move, Madam Chair, that we place this letter on file.
I second that.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Zero. Motion carries three, zero. That brings us to comments from interested citizens. Anybody here have anything they want to get off their chest?
A letter of thanks.
I'm getting there. That was on the next. Oh, you wanna put that on that? Okay. Very good. We're just gonna backtrack before, back to Communication B. In light of the vote and Mr. White's resignation, I would ask that the Town Clerk send him a letter of thanks for his many years of service as a probate court judge. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Mike, thank you. Anyway, we're back to comments from interested citizens. Okay. I don't see any out there, so, oh, go ahead, Jim.
I know we've been saddled with the storm the last few days. Did I not read in the newspaper last week that Newport was selected for the Volvo? What is it, Round the World? What is this thing?
14, I think.
14. But is there any way that we can, with our small consensus here, but I think we're all be on board, to encourage the governor? This is where we spend money to help grow Rhode Island and, and Fort Adams. The Newport needs, needs the proper facilities to gather these kind of races in the future. So I don't know, Madam Chair, if tonight is the time to suggest that maybe a consensus from the council, or do I have to come up with some kind of a resolution? Or can we move forward encouraging the governor and our General Assembly members to, whatever it takes to spend the money? This is too important to not have the proper assets in place.
You certainly can discuss, make that suggestion tonight, but you'd have to put it on the next agenda meeting for an official resolution of support, encouraging the governor, encouraging Fort Ad, monies be spent at Fort Adams, et cetera.
Okay. Right. Just wanted to blurt it out.
And I think you'll get that to us for the next meeting. Jim?
Oh, I don't know. My computer skills are really crashed.
Let's see, what did I want to say? "We all attended the firefighters', South Kingston Firefighters Celebration at the Elks on, was that Wednesday night, I believe? And it was a wonderful affair to many young and old dedicated firemen, male and female. I'm totally impressed with everyone there, the volunteers. I mean, I said in my speech the other night, and I'll say it tonight, they're so different than any other volunteer because when the bell goes off, they go running, and they have to put down their kids, their jobs, their... They wake up from their sleep, and they really do protect our community. And we're very proud of them and inspired by them, and I think I speak for all of us. I know they were, both Meg and Jim were there, and it was quite an event." So, with that said, anything else?
There must be. It's been such a busy week or two.
Well, yeah, I think we ought to say something about the storm. I mean, everybody's suffered through the storm, and we... Everybody's been quite patient. It's been quite difficult, and hang in there. And thank you to the staff and the town manager and all of the staff for all of the wonderful work you're doing trying to get us through the storm, get us through the roads, the power outages.
I'd like to take the opportunity just to give a couple of, a couple of descriptions of what's taken place. Since the storm occurred on Friday and into Saturday morning, the town's been extremely busy. But we're not through the crisis yet. The first 36 hours, Public Works, Police, and EMS were quite busy. We had several heart attacks, strokes, and many, many accidents that had to be serviced. And obviously, South Kingston was probably the most hard-hit community in the state. Why? One was because of the conditions that we had with the beginning rain, the freeze condition, and very heavy snow. With the 18 inches of snow, we were not able, as we normally would be able to, with pickup trucks, be able to run some of the 19 snow routes that we maintain. And it required us to have several of the neighborhood roads that were left unplowed on Saturday and were not touched either till Saturday, late Saturday night, or onto Sunday. We need to push those back. Public Works is working this evening for the second pushback on the, on the minor roads in town. We have closed school for a second day, Tuesday, tomorrow. Our concern was the safety of the children. Without having the road network proper for the buses, particularly with the number of low-hanging branches that are still laden with frozen, frozen snow, and with the number of cable wires, either telephone or Cox Cable on the ground or Verizon, we did not feel it was appropriate for the buses to be in operation tomorrow morning. We were also concerned of the time that we had to make the decision based on the rain conditions that we had and the potential for additional flooding. So we will have schools closed tomorrow. We anticipate being able to resume normal operations on Wednesday. I want to also point out that the town operated on behalf of Narragansett and South Kingston, a warming shelter, that on the first evening serviced 80 people that needed refuge and 50 people on the second night. We have, at this point, three persons in residence that hopefully have got their power returned and will be able to go back home. and will be able to go back home before this evening is over. That effort was an effort that had collaboration with the Fires, Fire Department and the Police Department in Narragansett, as well as the town's EMS program and the Police Department. It also had some very dedicated volunteers that ran the South County Shelter on the town's behalf. Those people deserve a great deal of credit for the number of hours that they spent and the care that they gave to the people that came to them for help. I'm very proud of the operations that have occurred, but not everything is perfect. And we will continue to have to push back roads and attempt to deal with sidewalks, snow on Main Street, but it's a case of us also having to take into consideration the lives and the responsibilities of our employees. The first thirty-six hours that they worked with eight hours off and then fourteen hours following that are the most that could be expected with both the manpower and the equipment that we have. So I'm proud of where we are. I think that by tomorrow morning, our local road network will be in much better condition. I also want to express thanks and for the assistance that we've seen with National Grid. National Grid, I think, has taken a great deal of abuse on the time it's taken to get services back in operation, and I think wrongly so. There are four major feeder lines that come into this community, each of them through vastly wooded areas, and many of those lines were taken down. It's taken a great deal of effort to first get those feeders back online, and second, to be able to get the local neighborhoods restored. We are, as of six o'clock tonight, with approximately twenty-five hundred accounts that are still without power. We have the highest rate of, of loss of any community in the state. But we continue to see the National Grid continuing tonight in an attempt to get those, those folks back online. The town is well aware that in many of the homes, temperature is in the thirties. From personal experience from every member of my staff to members of the council, we understand what hardship that has created. Yet we also have to be appreciative of the fact that the services that we're attempting to do ought to provide for the community, and we hope for continued patience and cooperation from the residents during the time that, that it takes us to get back to a normal operation. That's all the comments I have for tonight.
Could I add something to that, Steve, if you don't mind? I was also particularly pleased because, as you, I still don't have any power, but, and the rest of us probably don't either, but I was listening to WPR radio very early this morning, and there was a caller that had called in and was absolutely praising the kudos of, and I know all of the fire stations are wonderful, but Tucker Town in a situation that was a life-or-death situation for an elderly woman, and somebody had called in to comment about how efficient South Kingstown was in working with the people, the necessities, the hardships, you know, the elderly, the sick. I was so happy to hear that about our town, so thank you for sharing that.
Our Fire Department had a great deal of activity during the storm as well. In fact, just as recently as today, they did a walk-through of all of the units at Tucker Town Village to ensure that the people were safe. They also answered, answered each of the calls for fire services, as well as the accidents that we had, and several of them were rollovers, so there was extrications that were required. So yes, I think that people can be well proud of what they have.
Absolutely.
Have there been difficulties? Absolutely. But at the same time, I think that, that these departments, whether volunteer or paid departments, have certainly done what was in the town's best interest. It'll never be a hundred percent the way we want it, but I think we're as close to being able to provide viable services as any community in the state, and hopefully our residents recognize that.
I think they do. They really do.
Good job. Good job by everyone. Thank you.
Every department, thank you.
So that's it for your town manager's report, Steve?
That's about all I've been working on, yes.
I think so. Well, you have been working tirelessly all, all weekend, right? You didn't get any time off, I don't think, did you? That phone's always ringing. And town solicitor's report?
I share with Jan Tom, and I am grateful that five minutes before the meeting began, my lights still went on.
Lucky you. Lucky you.
Your lights went on, how about the electricity?
Mine went on today, too, and I appreciate National Grid and the town manager's office for getting me on that list, that long, tiresome list. So that brings us to appointments. We don't have any appointments for boards, committee, or commissions, but we do have one appointment tonight, very special appointment.
I would like to make a motion for a resolution appointing Merlin O'Keefe as the probate judge for the town of South Kingstown in accordance with the town charter, Section 4631, entitled Probate Judge.
And I'm honored to second that.
Jan, before you vote, could you just say, um, effective?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I expect that appointment to be effective as of this date, which is February 11th, 2013.
Again, I'll second that.
So we have a motion and a second, but before I take a vote, I'd like to say that I've known Merlin O'Keefe for many years, and he's been a lawyer since 1980. We're, we're on a lot of years now, Merlin. You stay seated, I'll do the talking, and then you can get up and say your bit. But I've known him in private practice, and I honestly remember you back in the public defendant's office when I was not a lawyer at that time.
A child.
I was a probation officer, so we'll get that straight. I wasn't, he didn't represent me. But I'm, you've done many marvelous things throughout the years. You're a member of, obviously, the Rhode Island Bar, but also the United States District Court, the United States Court of Appeals for the First Circuit, Supreme Judicial Court of Massachusetts, and the District of Columbia Court of Appeals. I'm looking through all that he's done over the years. He's been a municipal court judge in Narragansett, a member of the disciplinary board of the Supreme Court of Rhode Island. He's been a solicitor in the town of New Shoreham, which is Black Island, as we all know. He's also been an assistant solicitor in the town of South Kingstown, an arbitrator with the Superior Court of the State of Rhode Island, and a bail commissioner for Rhode Island statewide. He and his, Mary Ellen is a teacher in town who, I've had the pleasure of having taught my children English. Very difficult job in high school. I think he'll make a great probate court judge, and he will serve us very well. So with that, I'm clearly giving my approval to his nomination. Anyone else like to say anything?
I, I just like the fact that Merlin's been so involved in community activities, someone that we see around town and always there to take a call and always there for our community. So I appreciate that effort.
And I also want to add to that, I have known Merlin for several years in my dealings with him on a professional basis, and I congratulate you, and I, I look forward to having you continue with your relationship with our town.
So with all of that said, I'm going to take a vote. We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, zero. Motion carries three, zero. Merlin, if you'd like to say anything at this time, congratulations.
Thank you. I'm honored, and I'll do my level best. Thank you.
Thank you, and we look forward to working with you. So that brings us to new business item E, which is a resolution endorsing the comments concerning Pending Coastal Resource Management Council Regulations entitled Section 980, Experimental Coastal Erosion Control. New section proposed for the CRMC Salt Pond Region Special Area Management Plan as presented in a memorandum from the Director of Planning to the Town Manager dated February 4th, 2013, and entitled Proposed CRMC Regulations Concerning Experimental Coastal Erosion Control. Town staff is directed to present these comments as the official position of the community at the CRMC Public Workshop scheduled for such consideration on March 7th, 2013. Steve?
At a recent meeting of the council and staff, council asked, once the staff had reviewed the Experimental Coastal Resource Control Guidelines that were prepared by CRMC, for staff to comment on those for council consideration. The CRMC has scheduled an informational hearing on March 7th where we would like to have a council endorsement of the draft comments that have been prepared by the planning director. Essentially, there's six components that we think need to be addressed within the, the initial draft from CRMC staff. First is that the, the area for the experimental beach, erosion controls are only the eight properties located at Matunik Beach. We had asked Coastal to consider adding the two parcels that the town owns where the town beach is. We feel that the town beach, which has certainly experienced considerable erosion activities over the past ten years, would be a great place for the community to be able to have demonstration of different erosion control devices and to be able to measure their effectiveness. Without having those two parcels incorporated into the regulations, that won't be possible. Second, what we're asking is that the, that technical appendices be created for the regulations that would provide the layman with a better explanation as to what type of experimental activities are allowable activities, or what are they contemplating. Right now, there is really no definition for those property owners as to what is an allowable or an acceptable activity, either of a hard or a soft nature. The third item is that there is not a provision for hybrid systems. Hybrid systems are ones that would provide both soft and hard measures used simultaneously as a means of controlling erosion. We believe that just the uses of soft measures is not an effective way of looking at experimental activities within that beachfront. Fourth item is that the technical committee is heavily laden with academic personnel and only has two members of the committee that are from municipalities of either Westerly or South Kingstown. So you've got an eight-person, a technical committee that would review applications submitted, of which there's only two persons that are representing municipal interest. The others are representing either staff position or from the academic community. We believe that there should be a more rounded committee for a greater exchange of information or different points of view. I think that the last comment that we want to make is that we also believe that the quid pro quo, if you will, that's being proposed in these regulations, that being that you must remove any unauthorized structure that currently exists before an application will be considered, is inappropriate. Our belief is that if enforcement regulations are required and requires, and enforcement actions ought to be directed, they should be directed through their regulations, not through the experimental control activities that these guidelines address. Finally, I think we can say that we think that this is a good starting point, but we're also hopeful that the points that we've raised can be incorporated into the overall document before it is accepted by the CRMC itself. So with that, if the council's in agreement with those points being raised, we will present those as a staff position on behalf of the council on the meet, at the meeting on March 7th. What I'd also like to do is to submit the draft as, in letter form, on behalf of the council in advance of the meeting, so that hopefully we can get some response from the staff, which are soliciting comments that evening.
Sounds great. I mean, when, the meeting on March 7th, you know where that's going to be, Steve?
It is going to be held at the Coastal Institute Oratorium at, at the URI Bay Campus.
Oh, okay. That would be something that would be good for all of us to attend, and anyone who's interested in the coastal erosion issues that have been plaguing, especially Matunik.
I mean, the Experimental Coastal Erosion Control Regulations were an outgrowth of the town's two applications
Right.
for, for erosion control at Matunik Beach. So I think that the town has a real position that needs to be expressed to continue to champion our concerns as to protection of that beachfront.
And what do you think the chances are that they will incorporate some of these ideas into their...
I'd let Donnie Packer answer that one. I really can't say. All I would say to you is that with this resolution, we can at least start the ball rolling.
Certainly, yeah. I mean, we've been going at this for how long now? When did we put that first resolution in, from Matunik? That was, are we two years?
Two years ago in January.
Wow, and we're still fighting the same battle.
Quit saying you're pushing sand against the tide.
Well, I think it sounds great. Anybody have any comments? Oh, Jim, raise your hand, go ahead.
Sorry, Steve, you know, this really makes sense. This is so reasonable.
Very.
And we've offered ourselves as a guinea pig, if you will. I like the fact that, you know, Matunik's a little tight, but suggesting that our town beach be involved, that's a lot more of an open area and one that maybe we could all learn, everybody from Coastal. And every time we seem to have something working out with Coastal, there's always that thorn in there. And as you mentioned, this quid pro quo, you know, if somebody's done something, it'll pass unless that's changed, it won't go forward. That's really antiquated thinking, and they really should adopt all of this. I think our community is willing to give this an opportunity, and really, it's a great right. And, gosh, and we've got to get on with this. Sooner or later, we're going to catch the wrong storm coming our way and maybe not have that opportunity, but I really appreciate this being done, and, and we need to move on it quickly here. And also, too, I guess, I have one other question. I don't know if Meg will have a question of you, but I noticed that, I believe, Sue Siznowski, Senator Siznowski, put in some recent legislation, but did that have to do with the committee makeup only and not some of this incorporated information we're putting forward?
I'm not familiar at this point with what legislation the senator has introduced as far as Coastal's concerned, Jim. I can, I can research that.
Yeah, it, it just came last week. I forgot who the co-sponsor was. It just came last week, and if it weren't for the storm, I would have paid more attention to it. I just didn't get to it. And, but this is really, it, it absolutely makes sense. Absolutely makes sense. So hopefully, we can get all of those points.
I just, I have just one follow-up, and, excuse me. And I think it's very important because this affects us so heavily in the areas that we are involved with here, particularly in the Matunik area. I just want to make sure everybody's on board with March 7th, and there will be good representation. I don't know what the representation will be from the town, but I'll ask the council members as well to make sure that whatever representation we can give to support this. I think that's very important.
And I guess, one last thing, if I may, Madam Chair.
All right.
The, Steve, I believe the infamous Red Book was put together back in 1976, 1975. And, you know, sometimes the town, you know, we hear from staff and others, oh, you know, Johnny come lately, and why haven't you moved on this? But basically, Coastal closed that book. Once they determined Type 1, Type 2, everything, they closed it. And they frankly weren't, weren't accepting innovation. They weren't accepting comments. They weren't accepting experiments going around the rest of the country and the world. And it's, it's, hopefully, here over the last couple of years, I think they're beginning to hear local concerns. But they really need to open that book up again and give us this opportunity for experimentation.
I think that the, you know, the fact that... I think that the, you know, the fact that from Westerly to Narragansett is looked at as a undeveloped beachfront, based on the Red Book, really does not provide for any opportunity for anything other than conservation uses on the property. And it didn't recognize that there was man-made structures that were within the title, title area to begin with. And that has been a difficulty. However, it's also an effective policy if the objective is to return the beachfront and to take out any of the structures that are there by preventing the preservation of those structures. So it depends on whether or not the, who you're asking on whether the regulations have been effective or not effective. Some would say that by allowing Mother Nature to do as it wishes to do and that the damage or destruction that's occurred to any of the man-made uses occurring on that beachfront have been effective in attempting to get that end. So I think, you know, I think it's been, over the last couple of years, better discussion with the Coastal Council as to, are there activities that are man-made in nature that do have a cohabitation ability with the, with the native beachfront? But I think we're a long way from getting a consensus position on that. But at least if we can look at some type of hybrid activities that would allow hard and soft measures to be used at the same time to see whether or not we can slow the erosion, because you're never going to stop the erosion, but at least to slow the erosion or to have more practical solutions for the property owners that are there, then I think we've at least got the discussion into the public domain. And I think that's what's important at this point. So if the council's in, in favor of the resolutions presented, adoption of this, we can get the first letter out.
Steve, as to number two on the technical appendix, I mean, this just seems like there's lack of communication between people who are on the waterfront and, and CRMC as to what they can do. So, I mean, this, we seem to constantly be running into that problem with the property owners.
When we met with the Coastal staff, when we saw the preliminary regs, we brought this issue up. Well, actually, we brought all of these issues up. But I think that, our feeling is that there are different activities that, that Coastal is aware of, that may in fact be something that could be tried. And what we're suggesting is that they provide that. I think Coastal's concern is that if they suggest that these are viable activities, it's harder to reject them if they are presented as an application. But there needs to be some midpoint.
Well, they need to start working together because it always seems like it's a hostile situation between whoever's living on the ocean or, and CRMC. I mean, it shouldn't be so adverse. But in any event, getting over to the members on the, the technical review panel. Now, is, that's not, you're not talking about the CRMC group that's appointed by the governor?
No, there would be a technical review committee that would review the applications, comment on it, make suggestions as far as the revisions. So yes, they have to have a, an academic background or expertise in coastal engineering. But we also think that just having a representative from South Kingston or a representative from Westerly, it may be better if there was greater balance with, with four people and possibly five people of an academic background for a nine-person committee, so that there'd be potential for greater dialogue rather than just one way of thinking when the applications are being, being reviewed.
So are you suggesting a nine-member panel? Is that what you're saying?
We're not suggesting any specific composition. What we're saying though is that there needs to be more local, practical participation in the committee than is being suggested in the preliminary regulations.
And who appoints this panel? CRMC? Does Grover?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Because if you recall, the Coastal Resource Management Council is who directed staff to prepare these for their consideration.
Well, any other comments? Do I have a motion?
Yep, seeing none, then I move approval of Resolution E under new business.
May I second that? I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Zero. Motion carries three, zero. And that brings us to new business, is this new business? Item F. A resolution authorizing an award of bid to Liberty Chevrolet, Inc., 90-Base State Road, Wakefield, Massachusetts, for the purchase of one 2013 Chevrolet six-wheel regular cab dump truck in accordance with all bid specifications in an amount not to exceed $33,127, including trade-in allowance for $7,000, and is further described in a memorandum from the Director of Leisure Services to the Town Manager dated February 5th, 2013, and entitled Bid Recommendations Six-Wheel Dump Trucks.
As noted in Terry Murphy's recommendation, this is an award based on lowest qualified bidder. The lowest bidder did not meet specifications on two important considerations, one being the truck body and one being the, the lacking, locking mechanism on the, on the truck body. So the lowest qualified bid is what was submitted by Liberty Chevrolet as presented on the agenda tonight. I would note that item G, while was approved as a CA as, under the consent agenda, we had originally gone out for two trucks. The prices came in over what was available for the two trucks. One truck, we're rejecting the bids on because we think that the price was higher than what we were willing to pay. But secondly, what we're going to do is revise those specs and put that item back out to bid. But the other bid, which is the item that's before you right now, item F, we're ready to recommend that the award be made on that this evening and hopefully, council will approve it.
Any questions at the table? Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve Letter F, the resolution authorizing an award to bid Liberty Chevrolet in Wakefield, Massachusetts for the specified dump, cab dump truck not to exceed $33,127, including a trade-in allowance.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Zero. Motion carries three, zero. That brings us to new business item H, which is a resolution authorizing the Town Manager to enter into a purchase and sales agreement on behalf of the town of South Kingston with regard to the premises at 252 Barber's Pond Road identified as the Sessors' Platte 9, Lot 86, held by the estate of Douglas Allen and is further described in a memorandum from the Director of Administrative Services to the Town Manager dated February 6th, 2013, and entitled Barber's Pond Road. And I see Mr. Packer has taken the podium.
Good evening. I, Donald Packer, I represent the estate. There's a number of memos in, in your package, one from me, one from Mr. Schach, one from Mr. Nada, which pretty much explain the situation. It's been a house since the 1950s. On this particular piece of property, which encroaches in a corner on Barber's Pond Road. And what we've asked to do is to transfer 517 square feet of Barber's Pond Road to the estate so that we can clear the title. The property's been for sale. It was discovered when we had a sales agreement and a survey was done, which is very unusual on Rhode Island, but it was. And it turned out that there was this little glitch in the survey and the location of the house. So we're asking to try to resolve this so that the estate can move on.
Two considerations that are involved in the purchase and sale agreement is that the price for the purchase and sale agreement would be set at $3,920, $32.50. Secondly, that the condition of the sale would also be that property boundaries be installed by the, by the party receiving the property. The dollar amount was determined based on taking the assessment value of the property and the projected sale price, averaging those two and taking the cost per square foot. I have not seen in my time here this type of a sale of a portion of a right-of-way. However, it's recommended that the council agree to this because the building, we really need a five-foot setback from the building itself as well, as well as the corner of the building being within the right-of-way. So it's in the town's best interest to get, to sell the property. It's also a case of providing the council with a process should this occur in the future again. We have one other parcel that we've, that we're dealing with, not subject of tonight's, that may also come before the council with different circumstances, but same type of issues. So those would be the two conditions that we would place. This has been reviewed by town legal staff as well as Donnie. We'd recommend council approval as presented this evening.
Any questions?
So the home itself, it'll be, what, a legal non-conforming lot?
It's, it's been reviewed. It doesn't, it doesn't take any reviews through planning board or zoning board. It's really just a redefinition of that lot. And, you know, we're not giving up any of the road. We're giving up the portion of the right-of-way which the road is resident to.
The road is a 40-foot right-of-way, but it's not improved to 40 feet any stretch if anybody's been down there. It's a narrow dirt road, so it really doesn't encroach on what's being used by the public of the town.
So there's still, now there's, there'll be 35 feet or how much will, will we have for the road?
Well, it's a five-foot offset from the property, but as Don said, the, the defined right-of-way is 40 feet. We will be taking a small section of that out of the 40 feet that will then be sold to a client. So you'll still have at least 35 feet. But the road itself isn't being relocated. The road is within, within the 40-foot right-of-way, we've got a, I think it's probably 15-foot wide drive surface for the road itself.
And the, most of the road will still remain at 40 feet, Carol. It's just when it gets to that little section where the house is, it's just going to jog in a little bit, five feet. So it, town doesn't-
For the most proper is, we don't want somebody working on the house who's going to have a ladder on the town right-of-way with a slip and fall.
No.
That's why we want the five-foot setback.
How long has the house been there, Don?
1952, I believe.
Oh, so this is way before these concerns were a big deal to someone building a house.
Right.
Year after Donnie was born.
Um, close.
Well, we won't go there.
Is there going to be a noticeable jag in the road? All of a sudden, someone's hugging the curb? All of a sudden, there's-
No, it's, it's an undeveloped portion of the right-of-way we're talking about. The only thing we want to do is to have the bounds put in so that the new owners of the property will know exactly where their property starts and stops.
Okay.
So how close is the house right now to the property line with the new survey?
It's over the property line.
Oh, it's on the other, oh, it's gone right over. Okay, so this, I, I understand, yeah. Okay, so now you'll have five feet from the next, from the right-of-way, which is the next property, piece of property.
There'll be five feet from the house to where the town's right-of-way is going to be, which allows you enough room to maintain the house and not be in the town right-of-way. But that's only the right-of-way. The traveled way is probably another 10 feet further away from the house.
Is that the closest setback you can have from another property line in South Kingston?
It's not a property line, it's to the, to the town right-of-way. So it's looking, if, if you look at the corner of the building and you're looking at the, the road itself, the road surface will be approximately 10 feet away from that five-foot offset that we have. So it's not anything to do with the adjoining property. It's how far he'll, that house will be from the road. Will be the same distance as it always is. It's just that the first five feet from the house corner will be owned by that property, property owner.
And right now, it's owned by the town.
And where the five-foot set is also, it abuts the state right-of-way for Route 2. So it's going to, we're going to move back five feet on the town's right-of-way, but the closest property line is the state property line for Route 2's right-of-way. Not the actual drive surface for Route 2, but the right, the width of the right-of-way that Route 2 sits within.
Wow. What is the setback on a, if you were building a new house, what's the closest you can be to the next property line? Is it 10 feet?
I'm not sure what the zoning is here or what the setback would be, but because it's, this is a non-conforming lot of record. Because back in 1952, there was no zoning.
No, I understand that. I was just wondering what, what it would be now if we were to build the house.
I'm not sure.
That I can't tell you. We, we didn't look at it from that perspective because it was an existing structure.
Was that ever a, a town road? You say right-of-way. Was that given to the town? It's a town right-of-way?
It's a town road that's within a right-of-way that, the town owns the right-of-way. And we, because we own a right-of-way, the road on it is a, is a town road.
Yeah, most right-of-ways are wider than the road surface. We have strips on either side. So this is really just impacting that buffer strip before you get to the road.
Yeah, on most streets, people think that they own from where their grass starts and their, their grass is within the right-of-way. Or it's snow.
But the, is a town road that the town does maintain for potholes as well as plowing, snow plowing, the rest of it?
It's a gravel surface road-
Right.
-that we maintain that.
Does that cross the Exeter line or it stops right at the Exeter line? Or does that come back onto Route 2 before you reach Exeter? I just can't remember.
I'm not sure on that, Jim.
Can't answer that. I don't know, I don't know whether that go, Barber's Pond Road goes all the way through, actually.
I don't think it goes through.
Yeah, it does, it goes right across from Wolf Rock's.
Yeah.
Hmm.
Isn't that Wolf Rock's? Is that where we are?
No, well, that's at the end. That's at the northern end where it comes out again. We're at the southern end.
Anything else? Any other questions? I don't have any questions.
I mean, I certainly don't have a problem with this. I'm just trying to-
No, trying to understand.
I'm trying to figure out 40 feet and 20 feet. I'm trying to figure out, how do we wind up with ownership of this, of the road?
How long have we had the right-of-way?
Yeah. Has this been something that the town has owned forever?
Oh, yeah.
1940, I think.
Yeah, I think, what year?
1700.
1700?
It was planted in 1700.
Okay. Long enough.
And somehow, the house ended up on the road.
Back to other people's birthdays.
And now we're taking it off the road.
Oh, yeah. 14, 15. Anyway, okay.
All right, so-
All right, all right. Yeah.
We kind of get it, right? Everybody's-
Yeah, I'm there. I think I'm there.
Okay. So do we have a motion?
Go ahead. All right, new business H. I, I move that we approve new business Resolution H.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Zero. Motion carries three, zero. That brings us to new business items I, J, K, and L, which we're going to wrap together as a package deal from Mr. Alfred. And these are resolutions authorizing an award of contract as part of the Integrated Government Financial Management Systems Replacement Project. So I'll let you take it from there, Steve.
A, a component of the town's capital improvement program over the last few years has been for the complete replacement of the governmental financial software systems for the, for the community. What does that mean? It means that what we're looking to do is to replace all of the financial software that we use for five different components. One is the financial management systems itself, which is the general ledger, all the subsidiary ledgers, as well as our payroll, bringing that in-house, and human resources where we would have one database that would deal with each person that's employed by the town full of part-time. And that, those records would be shared with, within the labor contracts, as well as leave authorization controls and payroll. It would also be integrated into the budget process where we'd be able to take the full costs associated with benefits as well as salary associated- cost associated with benefits as well as salary associated with each of the positions. This would give us far better control and analytical abilities in terms of analyzing data and being able to present data and to make more data available to the public for review. Other components will be, once you replace the financial system, we also will need to replace the town's tax assessment and the tax collection. So it's the billing and the collection systems. We'll also be replacing the software for our utility billing, for both water billing and sewer billing. And we'll be introducing new software, which will provide for the first automation for licensing procedures within the town and permitting within the town. Principally, principal focus will be on the building inspections, electrical inspection process as far as the, those... So the overall system will have to have each of the softwares being able to talk to each other. Back in June of 2012, the town council authorized a consulting contract to be let on behalf of the town and the school department. And again, all of the financial systems that we're looking to replace will be an integrated system so that they would be used jointly by both the town and the school system. So all of the school budget and school financial accounting will be handled under the same software. It'll provide greater access and if there's a need to integrate governmental functions or management, financial management practices, because we'll be using common software, it will provide us with greater ability to be able to affect those ends if efficiencies can be found in that area. We are looking to award three different companies. Tyler Technologies or Munis System would be for the financial payroll and human resources component. Secondly, would be Division Governmental Solutions, which would be the Opel system, which would be for the tax assessment, collection, and the utility billing and collection. And third, as I said, would be with Viewpoint Governmental Services, would be for permitting and licensing software. We have gone through an exhaustive review of the various companies that provide municipal software over the past several months. That review has brought us through a bidding process, a demonstration project, and an analysis of, of all of the needs that we have that, and the crosstalk that's going to be necessary with each of the softwares. We're now in a position to recommend the award to those three different companies. We're also asking for a fourth award, which would be for project management, which would be an extension of the contract with Blunt-Sapiro, who is the consultant that we've worked with over the past eight months to get to this point. They would be responsible for assisting the town and working between us and the software installation companies to be able to come up with best management practices and the installation of the operating systems for the use of each of the softwares. And the, the training that's necessary for our, each of the, our staffs to be able to use the new software packages, and would also be able to deal and assist us in the conversion of existing data, be able to talk the same language as the licensing companies that we would be purchasing from. The, the cost, as noted in the contract documents tonight, show that with Tyler Technologies, the price would be not to exceed $367,000. With the Vision or Opel, $243,000, and $132,000 with Viewpoint. The contract for the project management with Blunt-Sapiro would be in an amount not to exceed $222,250, which is up from the $60,000 that we've spent to date to be able to get to this point. Overall, the cost of this project for the first year, the purchase, installation, training, version of data, would be $671,000 before contingency. We'll then add approximately a 10% contingency or $70,000 to those software contracts. And then the $162,250 addition for the project management. Overall cost of what we're recommending award this evening is $904,250. We've also noted that in addition to negotiating the purchase prices and training, conversion, and installation, we've also got agreements with each of the three vendors for what the maintenance costs will be associated with the software packages for years two through five. I say two through five because first-year maintenance is included as part of the installation cost. But this would provide the not-to-exceed dollar amounts for the maintenance. We currently have maintenance costs for ADP, which does our payroll, as well as the admins' software system that we currently use. Obviously, once we stop using those systems, a year from now, we'll stop with the maintenance cost. So our first-year maintenance cost is free for the new software, but we have to continue maintenance on the legacy system, which we purchased back in 1985 for one year until we do the jump over to the new software. So essentially, we've got in place what each of the softwares will be and what the cost of licensing and maintenance will be over the next five-year term. We've also isolated, particularly on behalf of the school department, optional software that may be purchased, that are different modules that they may need in the future. This contract will take approximately 18 to 24 months for complete installation and full utilization. So it's not something that's going to be done overnight. We would hope that we would have the financial management system in place effective September 1st. We would hope to have the payroll to, to cut over for January 1st of 2014. And we would hope that we would be able to have the tax systems ready for tax billing in July of 2014. And the billing on utilities, we're not sure whether we can get that in in 13 or whether that'll have to be 14 as well. I want to give a lot of credit for this project to the finance director. Alan has done a marvelous job in terms of coordinating all of the different financial staffs, both at the town level and the school level, as well as working with the assessors' office, collection department, and the utilities department for the collaboration that's necessary to get these softwares to, to merge. Alan's with us tonight. I don't know if there's anything I've missed in the presentation that you want to also add before council acts on this, Al?
I don't want to really be redundant on any of the info that Steve said, but it, it has been, you know, both a, a town and school effort. The school department has contributed. And we went through several days, or I think it's actually weeks, as far as test drives and visiting various communities that had the software. It's something that, you know, we'll be adopting best practice, state-of-the-art best practices, which will convert a lot of manual systems that we have now into state-of-the-art automated systems. So I think, you know, while the cost appears high, you have to look at it, that this is probably a 10 to 15-year lifespan. So if you amortize it even over 10 years, it's about 90 grand a year for the, the upfront costs. And I think as Steve covered and we talked about in the, the pre-session, the maintenance costs really, we're, we're paying just under what we'd be paying in that two- to five-year period now for the payroll and the admins' maintenance services. The implementation and conversion, it's going to be a, a painful process. That's what everybody says, and we're expecting that. But I think the long-term benefits of what we'll get out of the system will far outweigh any time and effort that we have to put in upfront. So greater efficiency, it really, you know, I, I think a lot of the, the positive output from this won't be until two or three years down the road, once you get some history, some data in there. But as I mentioned in the pre-session, it's going to give department heads the ability to have real-time data instead of once a month. So I think that, you know, alone, as far as them monitoring their accounts and making sure they're within their budgets as budgets get tighter, will certainly allow for us to have greater accountability. Unless there's any questions, that's pretty much it.
I think the last thing I want to make sure is clear is that the $906,000 would be paid over all of the different funds that are going to take use and benefit from the different packets. So we're not talking about just the general fund and the school fund, but we're talking about each of the three enterprise funds, as well as leisure services for Peace Hill, Office Building, the Guild, and with senior services. What we've, what we will be looking at as far as utilization and then being able to come up with cost distribution, we've given a preliminary cost distribution to the school department at $344,000. They have, I believe, a, an earmark of $350,000 associated with this project that they discussed as a school committee discussed last year when we were beginning the project. So the project is in at the dollar amounts that we expected for the first year. The dollar amounts are, as Alan said, for maintenance purposes, we're really got a wash as to, a wash from what we're currently paying. We've got isolation on what specialized services may be necessary that the schools may want to take use of. So we've got controls on all of those different things at this point so that we're not negotiating and trying to establish what fees would be at a later time. So we've got everything to the point to make the awards, then it'll be the implementation that we need to start from there. So I have nothing further unless there's questions from the council. We're glad to try to answer them.
Yeah, the only thing I would like to add is the money for the, the general fund and the school fund are already in the IT reserve fund. That was money that you transferred in June, and the school committee has done the same thing as far as setting up that commitment as far as the $350,000. So it's not money that's going to come out of the operating budget now, it's already in the IT reserve fund.
Any questions? Well, I know you guys have been working very hard on this. And the admins' software, is that becoming obsolete? I mean, it's...
It's a legacy system. It's a DOS-based system. So one of the things we did look at was the admins now has upgraded from the DOS system and it's, but it's just a little behind and, and they don't really seem to have the, they're, they haven't been as aggressive as far as updating their software. So it would have been, for instance, on the payroll and the HR, they had those packages, but they didn't have the tax package. They didn't have the fixed asset system. And there were quite a few modules that we would have had to go out and get third-party vendors. And there is where you have to have a, a critical interface, and it was just going to be too many vendors, and it was just a concern over whether the systems would all come together and, and work efficiently.
One other point that I think is also important to note is that the school has gone to a uniform chart of account, a UCOW, as it's called. There's been legislation introduced to develop a UCOW for municipals as well. We've had discussions with Tyler, who would do the financials, that if we have to develop a chart of accounts, and then it has to be revised, that that will be part of what we're paying for, so we're not looking at additional costs coming forward. Because, I mean, our worst nightmare is to come up with what we think is the appropriate chart of accounts, and then a year later have the state say, we want you to change the chart of accounts, the chart of accounts again. But we've dealt with the companies. They're aware that it's coming. Also, the fact is that if there is a municipal UCOW that's required, the munis package is already in Rhode Island and being used by several communities. So they would be making the systems change on behalf of several accounts rather than one individual account or one municipality.
Well, go ahead, Jim.
I think the taxpayers will like to hear that basically a wash on the maintenance costs, as you said, as you measure this over a period of time. Something that has this length of life, should it be in capital budgets? Should it be pay-as-you-go? Where, where could this fall?
It, it's capital, because what we're doing is, in fact, we've taken it through the, through the capital budget. The maintenance is operational. So you're not going to see any awards from the council on this because you've never seen, each year we approve an IT budget. Within the IT budget, the maintenance components are there. It's proprietary service because you're not going to buy services for munis from anybody other than, than Tyler. And what you're really paying for, when, we call it maintenance, but it's also enhancement, because what they've got to do on a yearly basis is they make changes to the software based on what the client base wants. As an example, if there's new Gadsby reporting, Gadsby reporting requirements that have to be prepared, they will prepare the software so that those reports would be, be available for the community. With admins, we would have to create those ourselves. So you're paying for enhancements and technical assistance, as well as just the, quote, maintenance on the, the software itself. But that part is operational, Jim.
Okay.
But the actual cost of the license would be capitalized here.
Thank you.
We, we would hope that this would be just as admins. When we bought licensing to admins back in 1985, I don't think we ever expected that it would take us, you know, take us out 25 years. But, you know, we've been very fortunate in terms of having an in-house programmer that was able to keep admins alive a lot longer than I think it would have stayed if we were just relying on outside services. But that's not practical any longer, and we think that this system will give us the, the best advantage, both in terms of staff that we have to attract at a later time and them knowing how to use it before they walk through the door.
Thank you.
And that goes for Vision as well. Opel, the tax packages and the utility billing and collection systems are, are well-known within Rhode Island and Massachusetts and Connecticut as well.
Yeah, I think Opel, Vision, whatever, is, they have, I think it's close to 28 of the Rhode Island cities and towns. So it, it is the dominant software as far as the tax and utility programs.
But it's probably important to put on the record, the difference that people will see with the Vision Opel software on the tax bills is segregated bills, one for motor vehicle and one for properties. That's a concern that we have. We've expressed that with Opel. They're looking at it. We don't think that they will be making the change within the first couple of years. And I think that we will see, the utility of our bills has, has always been better because we're able to put on one bill, the, the cars and the, the real estate. Now what will happen, as happens in the other 28 communities, people will get a real estate bill and they will get a motor vehicle bill. That's the only downside that we can see on the system. But the upside is that there's a great deal more services that'll be available to the taxpayer to be able to, one, be able to find out what they owe for money, how they can pay the money without having to visit town hall at all. So there's a lot of good that can, will come with this system. It'll also hopefully streamline some of the tax certificate requirements in terms of dealing with that aspect of the book of business that we have to deal with. But I think the only difference, software integration will be transparent to the, to the taxpayer, other than in terms of the bills that they receive.
Yeah, just to take that comment one step further, the motor vehicles, if you have five or six motor vehicles, they'll all come out on one bill. But with the properties, it will be individual bills. We're working on trying to get it so that if, if you have six properties, that hopefully we can get six bills into one envelope and send it out that way. So that's something that we do have to work on, but it should, again, allow for some efficiencies in the tax collector's office as far as doing lien certificates and that thing, where they don't have to go in and look at the six different properties.
It's a work in progress.
Of course, the way folks now, IRS time, they just combine that motor vehicle tax and, you know, the property tax, and maybe the IRS will change the rules down the road. Maybe we'll have to keep them separate.
They'll have to have an add machine for the six properties that they own. And I would like to have to have an add machine if I had six properties.
Depends when you bought them. Yep, true.
Well, it sounds complicated, but I, you guys are the experts, and people will still be able to do the online payments that, and all of that.
The ACH, yes. And they may also have... prefer to pay the convenience fee.
Late fees.
Exactly, which can be far greater.
It might be better. Okay, any more questions?
Good.
So, do I have a motion for a new business item I, J, K, and L?
I make a motion to accept on February eleventh, items number I, J, K, and L respectively, and this is the resolutions for awards.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Motion carries three zero.
Thank you.
So, that takes us to the end of the night.
Oh, the delay.
Oh, thank you.
Oh, yes, we did.
Okay, we'll continue. We need a motion? Motion? Continue, License B.
Oh, here, right here.
Till next meeting.
All right, council, what I'd like to do is continue the motion for a resolution, License B, on tonight's agenda for TLC Coffee Roasters, Kingston LLC, to the next scheduled town council meeting. So, that's my motion.
I second that motion.
We have a motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. So, motion carries three zero. And now, we need a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Zero. Motion carries three zero. And Mike? I didn't, I was only kidding.